The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go for a roll call.
Mr. Arcuri and Mr. Haber are absent today, so Mr. Rokucci?
Here.
Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Seveson?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
And Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, EJ, a report from the Planning Director.
Good morning Commissioners, EJ Avaldi with the Planning Services Division. So as you know Merrill Haber is not here today. Just to let you know, he had an unfortunate incident with that ice which Larry might be familiar with up in Tahoe. He was actually hospitalized, but as of yesterday, we understand he's back home recuperating. Knowing Merrill, he's probably listening to us right now, so I just want to reach out, send him our well witches and hope to see him back here soon. So we look forward to that. So I thought, starting today, maybe I'd do a recap of our last year. Today marks our 15th Planning Commission meeting of this year. There's been over 32 hours of public meeting time, which doesn't seem like a whole lot, but considering the number of projects that you've considered, it's quite significant. You know, it just means you're, you guys get things done in a very timely manner, which is a good thing. The, you know, what that doesn't include at all, the hundreds of hours that you guys use or take to review staff reports and bar mile documents and everything associated with these projects. Also, meeting with project proponents and opponents at the same time, so I appreciate all the service that you provide here. This was what I consider our Tahoe light year, meaning that we only went to Tahoe once. I know in the beginning of the year, you know, due to the inclement weather, we started doing a video feed to Tahoe, which we're doing right now. Behind me, you'll see on the screen. So next year, I anticipate we'll probably be in Tahoe a little more. There's a lot of things going on up there. So looking at this past year at a glance, your commission was instrumental in reviewing and approving the first small lot maps in a couple of the specific plan areas, including Placer Vineyards and Bickford Ranch. In Tahoe, you also deliberated and approved the North Star Mountain Master Plan, Plumjack, Palisades at Squaw, among others. And 2017 was not without its share of controversial matters, including the emergency shelter, of course, that we heard during the beginning of the year. And you also were involved in a couple nuisance abatements, which we do very few of. So lastly, your commission approved ZTA's zoning text amendments to address the long-term goals of the county, including the water efficiency landscape ordinance and secondary dwelling units, which is now effective. So as we gear up for 2018, I anticipate several Tahoe projects coming forward. We also have the Sunset Area Plan in Placer Ranch. We'll probably first see that probably as an update and then probably a hearing on the draft DIR before deliberations later in the year. Also, you know, we're working on the affordable workforce housing strategies, which we're going to get a comprehensive update on that today for your commission. And then also the new winery and brewery ordinance will be taken on. So as far as the 2018 calendar, I'm expecting it to be pretty busy and it'll probably be split between here and Tahoe most of the year, weather permitting. Mr. Rokucci.
Thank you for that last comment.
He likes to go up on the snowy days.
That's what I, that's what I understand.
I think EJ does, so I'll make that clear.
He doesn't want to listen to you grumble.
So just a couple updates from the last couple of board meetings. Back in November on the 14th, the board supervisors approved the secondary dwelling residential unit ZTA, you know, as recommended by the commission. And then just this past week, they considered the Bickford Ranch specific plan, all the county service areas and establishing the zone of benefits. You know, that's a financing mechanism for the sewer parks, fire and emergency services, roads and drainage. And to finalize, they approved the final large lot map for Bickford Ranch as well. We have probably seven sets of improvement plans right now for Bickford Ranch that are being reviewed, most of the backbone infrastructure. So I would anticipate that you would see some groundbreaking the first part of next year. So with that, I think that's all I have. The 2018 calendar is part of your consent agenda. I'm not sure if we're going to have anything lined up for that first meeting in January, if we can pull it together over the holidays and get notices out. We may have that meeting, otherwise it'll be the second meeting in January. So with that, unless there's any questions?
Sure.
I can't, I can't. I don't think it's on, though.
Oh, over here. I'm sorry. Yesterday at TRPA, we had our Christmas party and sorry you guys couldn't join me with it. It was nice. But we did, we did talk about different things by jurisdiction and one of the things, several things actually, that Placer County was ahead of the rest of the counties and cities in the garbage container thing that we've had for some time and it's worked quite well. They're still struggling with in some areas, inclined villages with all the well-to-do people we have there can't decide on how to deal with it. And so they're struggling and now the rest of the basin is trying to catch up with us. We talked about several items, but it was interesting that Placer County is doing well as a jurisdiction. And so it's good to hear. There's probably other things, I'll think of them later.
And they, you know, TRPA does an annual audit with the county and we just completed that and they rank it by percentage of completeness, how we're complying. And my understanding is that we are at 98%, which is, which is better than any other jurisdiction in the Tahoe Basin.
We also approved returning a bunch of money for bus service and other things that we, we passed through TRPA and so we did that yesterday, too. So the county should be getting a chunk of money.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up for any public comment, but this would be on something that's not on the agenda today.
Well, I was going to talk on the last agenda, the last agenda item, the report you just had. I have some questions.
The last agenda item?
Yes. The planning report.
Oh, okay. What we just talked about, you mean?
Right.
Okay.
I have some questions. I'm wondering how many units were approved this year and how many units have been approved overall and then how many are pending proposed before planning housing units? And, well, that's my main question.
So that's information I don't have right off the top of my head, something I can provide either, you know, give an update to the commission at their next meeting and in the meantime, I can connect with you, Mr. Garibedian, and provide you that information.
Sounds good.
Just residential units?
Yes.
Not commercial, okay?
Right, and just a comment. I know there is a, there's a shortage of, in the building industry, of employees finding, and I'm just wondering if the county is looking at that or involved in that, trying to deal with it?
I think, I think if you stick around, our last agenda item today will be a partial answer to that question.
The housing question? Double.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's on our agenda. Probably be more than a partial. It'll be a status report. And so if you stick around, I think you might get that partially answered at least, so.
I'm glad to stick around. And I would just add to the, also the number of those that are affordable units, housing units.
Yeah, just for clarification, you're talking countywide or?
Unincorporated area.
Okay, Tahoe and, Tahoe and Auburn area or West Slope area?
Right, Oak County.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Garibedian, there's also a staff report over on the side for the housing information.
I got it.
Okay, any more public comments? Okay, with that, then we will move on to our consent agenda. And we have next year's calendar as well as the Briar Meadows Estates here in Auburn and the Cabral Ranch.
And Chairman, if I may, staff is going to be asking to pull off item D under consent, Cabral Ranch, for a, for a minor modification.
Okay. And so then basically, we'll pull that off. And so this will be next year's calendar as well as Briar Meadows Estates here in Auburn. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Does that include the action agenda?
What now?
Also includes the action agenda?
Oh, all the action agenda, too. That's correct.
Yes.
I'll move approval of items A and B under the consent agenda, which is the action agenda for October 26th and the approved 2018 Planning Commission meeting calendar.
Second. Okay, roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Rokucci and a second by Mr. Nader. Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and so with that, we'll just jump right into the Cabral Ranch and we'll hear from staff on what you're thinking about here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Patrick Dobbs. I'm in the current Planning Services Division and I'll be presenting the Cabral Ranch Extension of Time Project. The proposal is a request for a two-year extension of time to the Cabral Ranch vesting tentative subdivision map. This is the first extension of time request. The subject property is a 12.4 acre parcel. It's located on Cook Riola Road, just south of Vineyard Road. This is in the Dry Creek Community Plan, west of Roseville in District One. It's a little hard to see on the screen there, but the tentative map allows for the creation of 12 residential lots. Each of the lots is just under an acre. There's a single encroachment onto Cook Riola Road. The tentative map was initially approved in 2008 and this commission approved a modification of the map in 2013 to allow for an electronic access gate at the subdivision entry. Those approvals were supported by a mitigated negative declaration for the project. There have been state, several state mandated map extensions applied to the project, establishing the current expiration date of December 23rd, 2017. The applicant has been diligent in pursuing implementation of the plans. They're currently in the improvement plan process. We had agendized this item to be on the consent calendar, but after the packet went out, we were contacted by the applicant, Mr. Brad Schurhal of TLA Engineering and Planning. He asked that we, for minor language change in modified condition of approval number 121, it's shown on the screen, we're not planning to, we're not proposing to add that highlighted section at the end of the paragraph, but because of the change, we pulled it off the consent calendar. However, we are recommending the Planning Commission approve the extension of time to establish the new exercise date of December 23rd, 2019 for the Cabral Ranch vesting tentative subdivision map, based on the findings in the staff report and the attached conditions of approval. And happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little concerned. You say part of what's written up there, you're not asking us to approve.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The highlighted end of the sentence there that is, has the strike through, we're not proposing that be part of the amended language.
Where it says 2015?
The actual, the, the paragraph would end at December 23rd, 2019. So that last statement about unless exercised by the recordation of a final map, that part of it wouldn't be included. And that essentially addresses the situation, should they apply to record the map just, you know, right before the expiration date, there is a window there in which the county is, is allowed to process that for recording, so. It doesn't change the, the county's standards regarding map expirations.
Okay, so it's the part that's yellowed out there, that's what you're not recommending?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, now I'm with you. Okay, well, thank you. We'll see if anybody from the public has a comment on this. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And it's back to the commission. If somebody would like to make a motion or have a comment, you're welcome at this time.
I guess I could do it, make an effort at it. I move that we support staff's recommendation to give a two-year extension with the modified changes in, that are reflected in the RADA. Is there anything else I need to add to that?
The findings?
And the findings, as well as the findings. Anything else? Is that good?
Second. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Nader, a second by Mr. Rokucci. Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Seveson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, at this time, we'll go on to the item that's dealing with an appeal of the zoning administrator's denial of various, in terms of building and parking area in Tahoe. So staff?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have watched last meeting on the video, so I will be participating in this item today.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Steve Bielno with Planning Services Division out of our Tahoe office. And the item I have before you today was actually continued from your October 26th hearing. And this was an appeal of denial by the zoning administrator on the applicant's request to modify a previously revariance for parking for the Gary Davis Building up in Tahoe City. The original application or variance occurred in 2002. And at the, at this time, the request was to allow for some remodel and expansion of the existing commercial building in Tahoe City. Because the project at the time included an expansion of floor area, there was a need or generation of additional parking that was required for that project to move forward at that time. Because the applicant was unable to provide the three additional parking spaces on-site that would be generated by the expansion, the applicant did apply for a variance to allow for that parking reduction. In 2002, when the zoning administrator approved that, a condition was added to the approval that required for compensation for the three parking spaces, spaces that the project was The project moved forward and was constructed. The condition number four that required for, that required the compensation for those three parking space deficiency was never satisfied. So in, earlier this year in May, the applicant came before the zoning administrator and asked that that condition be removed from the previous variance approval. The zoning administrator considered that request and took action to deny the request of being unable to make the findings to support removing that condition or there no longer being a need for those three spaces to be compensated for. So on October 26th, your planning commission considered the, Gary Davis then appealed the denial by the zoning administrator. So your planning commission considered the request or the appeal by Gary Davis on October 26th. At that hearing, there was a discussion by the public, the appellant and county staff. One of the items that the appellant raised had to do with design services that were rendered for construction of a bus shelter. At the end of the hearing, ultimately, planning commission decided, determined that there was insufficient documentation to support that the bus shelter design had in fact satisfied condition number four. The planning commission also could not support the suggestion for a reduced in-lufi for the parking spaces from the $30,000 that was required in, or had been reduced down to $30,000 from the approval in 2003. And the planning commission also could not support the, providing for the three offsite parking spaces without it being tied to a recorded easement that would ensure that those parking spaces were maintained in perpetuity. So the planning commission, your planning commission directed the appellant and staff to look for, to continue the item to today's date, allowing time to find a resolution to the issues before us. County staff and the appellant have met on a number of occasions and I'll kind of detail the summary of those discussions. On November 9th, we did meet with the appellant up in Tahoe City and identified essentially four different options as potential ways to resolve this and bring forward a favorable recommendation to the planning commission. One would have been to obtain a recordable parking easement for private property and in particular, the Con property, which is located just to the east of the subject property in Tahoe City. This particular property actually is within the 400 feet that is identified within the zoning ordinance that would be allowed for offsite parking. We also suggested that the appellant explore opportunities for other properties within the 400-foot project site, understanding we would still need to research the availability for zoning and also confirm that they were within 400 feet and there may be, and do an analysis of the parking demand for those additional sites. The third option would be to explore a reduction to the $30,000 fee requirement that is required, currently required for condition number four. One of the things that we suggested to the appellant was that should that be an option, that should also include some sort of justification or rationale for the reasoning for the reduction of that fee. And the last item that we identified was that the appellant was going to consult with Department of Public Works and Facilities to see if there was an opportunity for him to provide design services for county projects that may reduce that, that are, satisfy that condition number four for the $30,000. On December 6th, we again met with the appellant to see what kind of progress had been made on those four different items. At the time, the appellant indicated that he was, while he was able to obtain parking agreements with several of the neighboring or properties within the vicinity, he was unable to obtain a recorded easement, that the property owners themselves were reluctant to record an easement on their property to ensure that those three parking spaces would be maintained on site. The appellant also looked, consulted with our Department of Public Works and Facilities to see if there was an opportunity to provide design services. There were a couple of issues with that as well, according to the appellant. One of them is that the JK JD Engineering, which is the appellant's firm, is not on the county's consultant list. The other concern with that is that the timing for the potential projects within the Tahoe region is somewhat uncertain at this time. The appellant did speak to the reduced in-lufi and suggested an amount of $10,000. In asking the appellant what the justification for this, he stated that his assertion is that there is no parking deficiency for his current project and that he does have agreements in place. And the appellant again restated the design services that had been done for the $40,000 worth of his staff time for the design of the bus shelter. The one item that's not listed on this, we did also call the appellant just yesterday to present some other potential options for consideration before we came before your commission. Staff suggested two different options for other ways to satisfy the payment. One would be an initial lump sum payment of $20,000 to satisfy condition number four that would be required within 30 days of the hearing. The other would be to spread that payment out over time with an initial payment of $10,000 and $5,000 each subsequent year until we reach the total amount of $30,000. The, in either case, the payment of these fees would also be tied to the current efforts to provide additional transit efforts within the Tahoe Basin. Neither of these options were acceptable to the appellant. So although, although there have been options identified that would satisfy condition number four, at this time, Mr. Davis has been unsuccessful in securing any recordable parking agreements for the neighboring properties. It's staff's determination that the county projects are not developed to a point where that would be a viable option to provide design services. And further, it's staff's contention that the in-lufi payment of $10,000 would not be appropriate, particularly due to the fact that the current, there's current documentation from a study from LSC that suggests that the actual cost for construction of parking spaces is $37,000 per space, which accounts for land acquisition, design, permit and build. Based on all of this, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission deny the appeal filed by Gary Davis and that the planning commission uphold the zoning administrator's decision and deny the variance modification as supported by the findings that are contained within your staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Go ahead.
Steve, you gave, it sounds like an option to continue to consider the plans for a bus shelter that was never built as an offset in one of your options. We had kind of dismissed that because there was not documentation to really support that at our last meeting, so I was surprised to see that it was still at least part of the discussion.
The, the option that we were looking at is that there, the intention of the county is to construct a Grove Street parking facility and that perhaps Mr. Davis's services could be applied towards some of the design work that would be required for that effort, not for the bus shelter itself.
So it was a different project?
Yeah. The issue with that is that that project is not far enough along that that would be an option that was, is within the near term here.
One last question is, obviously, a great deal of time has passed since it really should have been satisfied some years back, but we're not asking for any penalties or interest in regard to that. So we're being, I think, very tolerant of the delay in this process. Isn't that correct?
That, that's correct. The, the construction, I forget if it was 2004 or 2005, that's the time at which the payment should have, have been made. Staff is not asking for any interest payments or any compensation for that length of time, simply to just satisfy the $30,000 that should have been accepted at that time.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Steve, maybe you can answer this, or if not, County Council. The ordinance that, that allowed condition number four to be placed on there in the first place, does it provide for the kind of let's make a deal that all this time's being burned up on? Does it flat say we provide parking or whatever you could negotiate instead of? Is there that kind of latitude in the ordinance?
The, the condition that actually wasn't contained within the ordinance, it was a condition that was imposed by the zoning administrator.
Based on the parking requirements originally?
Correct.
So the ordinance that requires that parking, does it provide for this kind of negotiations?
There was language included in the condition that did allow for the opportunity for additional design services to be provided at, at that time. However, the, the condition was specific in that it did require the approval of the Development Review Committee for that to be a viable option, and that did not occur.
That's, that's my understanding, they're correct, but, but the, the original parking thing doesn't provide for, for let's make a deal?
There's no language within the ordinance at the time that, that provided for this, just the language that was originally contained within condition number four that did speak to the ability to provide design efforts for transit services.
On an approved project?
Correct.
Correct. But the original condition was also 15,000 per space?
Correct.
And then it got negotiated down to 10?
That's correct.
How did that happen?
There was a request by the, by Gary Davis to the zoning administrator or planning director, Fred Jaeger, at the time that... director Fred Jaeger at the time, that asked that the planning director consider the fee study that was in place back then in 2002 or '03 that would suggest a reduction in the actual cost to construct spaces. These, planning director considered that request and took action to, and we do have that in writing, that reduce the fee to $10,000 per parking space.
I have a question, I guess it kind of deals with the in lieu part, and I understand that, you know, you can't back, go back and put all the pieces together from the past. But you said that there's a contractor's list that the county maintains, and so what are the criteria that somebody would have to meet in order to be on that list?
I don't know if I can speak to that.
Yeah, I don't know if I can speak to that, I don't know if Ed can speak to that. Those are, we were talking about consultants for DPWF and their projects, so I don't know if you can weigh in on that, Ed?
Yeah, a request for proposals are sent out, and interested parties, interested firms respond, and then provide information regarding.
Your mic's not working. I don't think your mic's on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And county staff reviews those proposals and ranks, ranks those firms from, you know, one to whatever, and depending on how many people we need on the list, you know, the, the top people are chosen and put on those lists. And from that list, when we have a project, the county can, you know, pick and choose which firms they feel would be best suited for any given project.
Okay, I guess, maybe to go a little bit further, though, if we're talking about, like, in this case, you know, he had, he owes $30,000, and you have a project, this is all hypothetical, I understand, but is there the ability, you know, if they're gonna donate that time, basically, is there ability for the county to accept that or not, and what are the criteria?
We did check with procurement, and procurement indicated that it would be acceptable for a contract at this level, which is a rather low contract, to be able to hire Gary Davis, even though he isn't on, technically on the, the approved consultant list. So that, that is an option.
That would be an option even if he's not on the list?
Correct.
That would have a lot of bid or anything like that?
That's not my understanding, no.
So I guess the problem that we're facing now is there's no projects that would meet the timeframe?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, any more questions?
Yeah, one, a question, Mr. Chairman. In the last hearing, there was discussion that at some point, when this whole thing was put together, that there'd been a meeting with Fred Jaeger, and, and I guess he authorized the permit to be issued without the money, the money to put forward, and there was some rationale or justification, everyone was gonna check in and see if there was any, any documentation for that. Is that, anything come of that?
County staff has done a fair amount of research, and we've essentially exhausted our options on trying to obtain any justification that would help, help to substantiate that claim. So county staff has been unsuccessful in, in finding anything that would support that claim, and we haven't had anything provided by the appellant either that would satisfy, satisfy that condition.
Well, maybe if the applicant comes up, I'll ask him again when he gets here. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess, Steve, just to follow on Larry's question is, you know, I know we kicked this around at the last meeting, how was this overlooked by county staff at that time? I mean, as he was saying, it was, obviously, apparently, they're saying there was a conversation between the appellant and Fred Jaeger, but you haven't find, found any documentation to support that at this point, and so.
Correct.
But the permit was still issued without satisfying that, so that's the struggle. Why did that happen?
Okay, is that it for the questions? Okay, thank you, Steve. Let me see, the, the appellant, would you like to address the commission? And I want to note at this time, too, that we do have the ability to talk to people up in Tahoe on the back screen, but seeing nobody there, I guess, Gary?
You're on your own. Pretty empty up there. Good morning, planning commissioners and chairman. Thank you for taking, again, additional time to speak to this issue a second time around. I did send out a memo yesterday, I hope everybody got a copy of that. Good, I don't want to take up too much of your time, so I'm not gonna read that and go all over it again, try and keep it short. I don't know if anybody ever said that, if I understand what was just talked about, that Fred Jaeger told staff not to collect $30,000. I certainly never said that. But the agreement and what he had written down on that condition, and the intent was that rather than put the money in the county coffers, that we would do something for our community that would provide a better benefit, because on the private side, we can do it at a greatly reduced cost. And so that was the intent of the negotiation, if you will, when we talked about it, was why put 30,000 that may have no, go nowhere versus let's put 30,000 onto something solid on the street that the community can benefit from? That was my intention all along. And thus, that was the same intention when we put the $40,000, and I don't know if you were saying, Mr. Nader, that there was not documentation, there's plenty of backup documentation of that, what was spent and the permits that were obtained. But there was no documentation, we got final approval from the Design Site Review Committee. Was that your question?
Well, Steve's saying that, Steve's comments are that there was no documentation that showed that there was, I mean, an acceptance of that as, an in lieu of the, the actual pain of a fee.
That, that's correct, but there is documentation that, that it was done. It was done in good faith, it just, but we didn't get through Design Site Review because we didn't have the funding at the end.
Right.
So we went all the way to there to get, obtain funding, and that would have been the next step, to go to Design Site Review and get approval.
Right.
But we didn't get the funding ultimately to go forward.
But I would think that, given, you know, the size of the obligation, that you would have gotten that in writing before you spent the time on it.
But you wouldn't have had a project.
Well.
Without the permits and the funding, there's just a.
Well, there should have been something in writing upfront, but.
Anyway.
We can talk about it after your presentation.
So, a couple of the, I think the staff report is fairly accurate, and we did meet several times and seemed like in good faith to try and move forward with this situation. We agreed if I could find another property, because the Corsair property, which is adjacent to mine, which provides us parking all year long except for the rafting season, maybe we could prorate this or do something like that. But as you may know, in a small town like Tahoe City that has about 100 years of history, or Kings Beach, or City of Auburn, the lots are very, very small. Many, many businesses do not meet the parking requirement. Some have zero parking, zero. So I am the only one that's ever had to face a fee for a parking variance that we can find in North Lake Tahoe, the only one. Staff has not been able to find one, I haven't been able to find one. We know of other properties that have zero parking and have not had to pay a fee. And the reason people can't encumber their property is because in Tahoe, with the rules and regulations of TRPA, and the small size of these lots, you don't know what the future holds, and you'd be really devaluing your property for eternity, essentially, to put that kind of an encumbrance on it. I have managed to get parking agreements with several of my neighbors that allow me 12 months a year to have additional three spaces. But they will not encumber their property with an easement. It's worked for 17 years, just fine. We manage our parking very carefully, all of us have been there for decades, we're owners and occupants of these properties, we manage it carefully, and we have had no problems in 17 years. I think that speaks to something. It came up, another idea when I was driving up this morning is maybe I just go vertical, get some lifts, put the three spaces back on my property. That might cost less than 30,000, I don't know. We have done that for residential projects, though. So I did the four things that we went over. I disagree a little bit with the one on Public Works. Peter Kratz seemed very favorable to the idea of assisting the county in getting two of these projects off the ground. The Business Assessment District, which is, should be coming up for a vote this year in 2018, allows for the new areas between the roundabouts with sidewalks, landscaping, snow removal, and all sorts of things. There's no funds right now for maintenance and operation of this. This is all put in by the feds recently, or is being put in over 2018. And he knows that I would like to support that project in any way I can. In other words, to help get the vote, to help get the assessments done, to help sway property owners to vote in a positive way, to provide that operations and maintenance money. We talked about that, he seemed favorable, that's in a timeframe that's within a year or two, at the most. Grove Street has been on the books for years, and it's not going forward because we don't have agreement from all the property owners that would need easements. Again, that's another place that we talked about, not just design work, but I know all those property owners, I can help assist and facilitate getting those easements. Peter didn't think that that was a bad idea, he actually thought it was a good idea, but again, we don't have a set timeframe, but we could do a contract that had a set timeframe, and if it didn't happen within that contractual period, then fees could be paid. But I think that's a reasonable alternative for what was originally intended with Fred Jaeger as planning director, to create something on the ground that was a positive thing for our community versus just donating money, it's not donating, but paying the fee or the penalty, as you will. So that option, I think, is still viable. The other one that I probably would like to just end this with is just pay the fee of $10,000, and the rationale and the mitigation for that is, one, I provide bus passes for all my employees, if they want them. We have provided bike racks for all the employees, a lot of people bike to work. We have now, as times have gotten more modern, people don't work at the office anymore. So another reason we don't have a parking issue is that people work out of their homes. I have two engineers in Reno that were previously in the office, now work out of Reno and come in once in a week or maybe. So there's really not the same parking demand you have for these kinds of small businesses and small lots in Tahoe City that you would have, and I understand you have to have a formula to find parking. So if you do a new Kmart, you can take the square footage, you can say X number of spaces per square footage, and that works great. But you can't do that in an old community like Tahoe and make it work for everybody. The one size does not fit all. That's why we have a variance process, to look at options, look at creative solutions, and not exacerbate the problem, but hopefully recognize that there are solutions to the problem. So I'm, even though we did not go through Design Site Review to get the final approval for the $40,000, I donated in services, I think that is a consideration that would help mitigate the reduction in fee to the 10,000 to get this over with. So that's pretty much what I have to say, but I can answer any questions.
Okay. Questions? At this time? We gotta open up, see if there's somebody from the public, and we can invite you back.
I'm still, Gary, I'm still a little unclear on, on this relationship with the planning director way back when, when they, they issued the permit without the fees being paid, and what, I'm not sure what the justification for that was exactly.
I don't think there was any justification, I think what happened was the county overlooked it, county staff overlooked it, and it went on for 15 years, being just kind of forgotten about. In the meantime, we'd gone forward with our donation, trying to get, to satisfy what I thought was my obligation, but the staff just simply never looked. I never had a bill, I never had a phone call, I never had an email for over 15 years for these fees. Never once was I asked to pay those fees by anybody from the county.
Okay.
Because the intent was to fulfill that option of the public service. But the staff, I don't know what happened there.
Well, it's a tough situation, I'm not sure which way we can go. I'll have to confess that because of the nature of this and the way it's come down, that, this has to go to the board of supervisors if, under appeal?
Well, based, based on the decision today, the, the appellant can appeal that decision. What I would like to.
I gotta, I don't think there's anybody from the public, but I gotta give that.
No, I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, I'm not prepared to make a motion or anything, I'm just, why don't we, why don't you go ahead and listen to the public, and then I'll comment later.
Okay. Yeah, well, we don't know if there's any public that wants to comment on this, but Gary, we'll let you come back up, and we'll discuss it some more, but is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment?
Never gotten here. Anybody in Tahoe?
Anybody in Tahoe? No?
MTC's back there.
Okay, so, well, since the public comment period is closed now, then it's up for the deliberation of the planning commission?
I'd ask, Chairman, I'd like to ask our attorney a question. Is there any kind of statutes of limitation when fees aren't collected in, I guess you might say, a timely manner? Any kind, any kind of fees?
No, this, this type of condition runs with the land, and so it's there from when it's imposed until basically the, the end of time, as far as we can see forward. There's not a statute of limitations for it.
Okay, thank you.
So what I, what I would add, though, the opportunity to appeal this condition would have been when this was originally approved, the condition was imposed, so, so what's on the table is not to remove the condition, because that opportunity for the applicant appellant to, to appeal that was at the time it was approved. That was not appealed, that was never fought. And so what's on the table today really are the terms of this condition, and, and should they be modified to reflect, you know, what, what's happened in current, in current today? So I just wanted to make that point.
What's, and for clarity, what's the current obligation, what's the fee right now, then?
Well, the obligation is to pay the $10,000 per space, which is $30,000, or come up with, the condition gives the opportunity, opportunity to provide some other benefit towards transit services in the, in the Tahoe area.
It was originally 45,000, though, wasn't it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, and today, just to mention, today, you know, based on current studies that show the actual parking, you know, cost of a parking space in the Tahoe Basin, right now, it's about 37, just over 37,000 per space. So things have significantly changed from, from back then.
Wow. It's a tough situation, there's no doubt about it. I understand Mr. Davis's frustration if he's.
Speaking of your microphone.
If he's had a 17-year relation where his parking's been available and it's worked, I understand that. However, just like the other property owners don't want to guarantee parking forever, Mr. Davis can't guarantee us that he will be the owner of this building forever, that the current users will be the current users forever, and I think that's where the pressure comes on, to provide a permanent and forever source of parking, because the players are gonna change.
Yeah.
And that's, that's kind of where I start leaning towards paying the fees and providing the parking somewhere.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion points?
I do not, and I said this at the last meeting, I continue to emphasize that, I do not like in lieu, not in lieu of fees. It's just, I think it's a real troubled path, because there's, I think, too many issues with it, and so I, I personally just don't want to see us go there. Steve, I have a question for you. If any, if we get an application on, you know, for permitting for either new construction or remodeling, they're required to meet the current parking obligations up there, and it's based on square footage, right? Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So nothing's really changed about that, so it's there. And you're now saying that each space, if they can't accommodate it on their location, is, they have to find that somewhere else, and it's about 37,000 if they want to compensate the county and their inability to, to do it. So those funds that, you know, now go towards a parking project of the future in, let's say, the Tahoe City area, that's what those funds go towards, right?
That, that's correct, and that's a newer provision that wasn't in place when this originally came forward, but was incorporated as part of the newly adopted Tahoe Basin Area Plan.
Well, I will say that I'm kind of following what Jeff said, I'm kind of sort of, I'm still in my same spot where I was at the last meeting.
But as, as a follow-up, has the parking requirements changed from then to now? Are they still same requirements for, like, square foot? Are they still same requirements for, like, square footage and that kind of stuff? They haven't been more stringent or more lax to the same?
They're the same per square footage.
Same ratio.
Same ratio, correct.
And that clarity to that 37,000 is per parking stall today's cost?
Right.
Correct. Today's cost. Well, my comment would be that, while a lot of this stuff was overlooked for many years, it has been reduced from the 45 to 30, and based on...and with no additional fee increases or penalties. I mean, no, you don't pay your DMV, and you start getting a cuing penalty right away. And so I...well, it's not an easy decision for me to make. I do think that...I agree that this business about in lieu and stuff is a lot of ambiguity, uncertainties in the future on that. So I would be in favor of the denial based on the staff recommendation and findings. And I do want to credit the applicant and the staff for working on this pretty diligently, just they couldn't come, in my opinion, come up with a clear alternative answer.
I have a question of staff, if I could.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who's the best person to answer this is right now. I'll just aim it that way. What are the...what limitations do we have as an example for an easy payment program? In other words, how much latitude do we have within our confines to amend the settlement to make it an easy payment program, for example? How lenient can we be?
Want to take a stab at that? You know, I mean, you know, we're in this 14 years. And so, you know, how much longer should the county wait to bring this to closure? What staff did at the, you know, the last 24 hours was trying to come up with, you know, maybe there is some payment plan or something that would work, that would suffice for Mr. Davis while at the same time, you know, securing the county.
Well, you did offer him $10,000 upfront and then five each year.
Right, so what we suggested is $10,000 upfront within the first 30 days, and then over the next four years, $5,000 a year, which would, you know, get to the $30,000 that was originally required. So that is one payment plan. I mean, we can draft a condition right here that would...
Very tolerant.
That would allow that if the applicant...if that was acceptable to the appellant. The other option is, you know, maybe it's more important to secure those dollars upfront. And if we secured them upfront with a lesser amount, you know, would that really be able to help us contribute to one of the parking or transit improvements in the Tahoe area? So the other option was to set the fee at a flat $20,000, but require that within 30 days of this hearing. And what we could do with that, just as an example, I know one of the settlement agreements with one of the Tahoe projects requires that we do this traffic demand study, which I believe that right now is at a cost of $25,000. So the county having $20,000 upfront, that could benefit the Tahoe community. So that would have an initial impact instead of waiting another five years. So, I mean, we did everything we could to come up with alternative payment plans, plans, solutions for Mr. Davis, but, you know, my understanding is, you know, from yesterday is that he did not have any interest in that. But, you know, if he wants to speak to that, I think that'd be fair, too.
But could we do either or? In other words, giving the easy payment plan over time with the option that if projects are identified, that he could trade out later on, that could be done if it was agreed upon? Or...huh?
Let him talk.
Why don't you wait until I finish before you comment?
Okay, yeah. Just think to yourself.
At any rate, I'm trying to...either or, kind of a mixture, so that depending on the time and the need and the projects that are available.
I could speak to that. I think we could write a condition for that effect that...
I didn't catch that one last time.
I didn't either. I mean, what you're asking is, could we have a condition that allows either a payment option, either $10,000 upfront with payments over time, or $20,000 upfront? When I say upfront, we're talking within 30 days of this hearing.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we can craft a condition that would capture both of those, because within 30 days, you would know which direction this was heading. But I would want to put some closure to this, too. I would recommend that, you know, within 30 days, if we don't receive either of those payments, that we set this up for a revocation hearing of the variance. So this doesn't go on for another, you know, two, four, 10, 14 years. But having the option of the two payment plans, can we put that in the condition? Yeah, I think that would...
Okay.
Let me see, the $20,000...I guess I wasn't following that very well. Is that a reduction from 30 to 20,000?
And the only reason we brought that up is if you were going to do a payment plan that went over the course of five years, you know, there may be more of an immediate impact to the county with a little lesser amount. We might be able to do more with that now than wait for five years for something to happen. I think right now the Tahoe community, they would like to see something happen now, not, you know, five years later, 10 years later. You know, I don't want to speak for anybody in particular, but that's just my thought.
So it's a forgiveness of $10,000, is that right? Am I hearing that?
Yeah, that's exactly...yes, that's what that would be.
Attorney has something to say here.
Just a brief reminder, as EJ did mention, a lessened amount to potentially $20,000. And if that were going to be what the commission decided to go forward with today, the commission would need to develop findings as to a justification about why that amount should be lessened from 30 to 20, or any other dollar amount that the condition should be reduced from. And then to go off of what EJ also discussed with some either-or provision, I think it was Commissioner Severson suggested, is that we might want to keep in mind the idea of timeframe and timeliness with projects in the county. There's a potential that if we discussed the ability to contribute towards future projects, it could be a timeframe that's unknown. And considering that this has been quite some time, we should keep that in mind. And also the potential for, if this was something that went five, 10 years further in the future as projects developed, there's a potential that potentially Mr. Davis or his company could no longer be in business or no longer be in the Tahoe area. And so there are some things to consider when we look at things that are at an unknown time in the future as far as modifying the condition.
Let me see, maybe...I guess one question, and I think you might have partially answered it. If Mr. Davis comes up with $30,000, and the issue that we're dealing with here is parking, and so from the county, what assurances are there that this money's going to go towards, you know, the parking or whatever issues we have related to that in the Tahoe Basin traffic?
Yeah, my answer to that is, you know, the money would go straight to Department of Public Works and Facilities for one of their future parking projects or transit projects.
In the basin?
Right. The use of the funds would have to be tied to some nexus with respect to the parking and transit in the Tahoe Basin, and so that money would necessarily need to go towards something that's related to the purpose of the parking fee or condition that was imposed originally.
Okay. So I think that's important, because if he has to come up with the money for to replace parking, and that's the issue or other transit things in the basin, that he'd want some insurance, and I'm hearing that today. So that's good. Let me see, the other question I have is, he was saying that, you know, small lots, I understand there's small lots in Tahoe, and there's a lot of existing buildings that probably don't have the required amount of parking. But, you know, it's hard to go back in time and fix all those problems. But it sounded like he's the only one that's been faced with this issue in the basin since the time 2003 or '04, when this was first approved? Is that true?
I might be able to speak to that generally. You're right, there are a number of properties in the Tahoe Basin that are deficient parking. What we do is we take a look at the legal nonconforming provision and only require compensation for the increase in the parking demand that's created by the project. Mr. Davis's project was no different than any of the other projects that we look at in this manner. We provided a compensation for the existing deficiency of his project and only required the compensation for the three parking spaces that were required to allow for the roughly 600 square foot of addition expansion in 2002.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Jay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. EJ, I wanted to ask about, you know, a payment program. Could we go ahead and deny the appeal and then direct staff to negotiate with the appellant a whatever you want to work out as far as a payment program, so that we don't have to be specific about it, but ask you to work on trying to find a acceptable program for the payment?
So my understanding is denying the appeal, that would give the appellant the only opportunity as then is to either appeal that decision to the board...
Right.
And go to the next level. I do have a draft condition based on the original payment plan that we discussed. If you would like to listen to that draft condition, to see if that's something that the commission wants to entertain or...
Yeah, I think we'd like to hear that, but also the, you know, if we're going to look at the $20,000, which closes it out right now, I mean, it would be a done deal. If we were to look at that, you had some rationale that would help us explain the variance. We may have to be more creative, but maybe you could do both.
You mean as far as addressing what the attorney mentioned, that we'd have to come up for a justification of taking it from 30,000 to 20,000?
Twenty, that's correct, yeah.
We'd have to find that somehow.
Let me see, I see a puzzled look, so...
Yeah, just trying to understand the question. If you'd like to hear the draft condition that staff has, I can read through that now. But then, you know, you had one second part of that question as far as, you know, leaving an option for the, you know, the $20,000 option upfront. So that's something, you know, we would have to add to this condition. Then the necessary findings, you would have to articulate that, you know, in your motion.
Okay. I guess kind of where I'm coming from...
Or the reduction from the 30,000 to the 20,000, correct?
Where I'm coming from is, well, at least what I heard you saying is, you know, the rationale, and this may not be the final rationale, but the rationale for the 20,000 is it get some money out there where the county needs it right now. And the extended one with the 10, 5, 5, 5, we're talking about five years. And for the county, at any rate, it may be better to go ahead and get the 20 now versus waiting for five years for this whole thing to finish. But at any rate, go ahead with both options, and we'll leave it up to the commission, I guess, to decide if it's 30 now, 20 now, or 30 over a five-year period.
And I would, you know, say to that, it's...that's all depends on if Mr. Davis is agreeable to that 20,000.
Right.
If he's not agreeable to that, then I'm not certain it's worth the commission...
Yeah, yeah, we would have to go back to Mr. Davis on those ideas, but those are kind of some options that at least we're hearing that we can look at today, so...
So one potential condition, which I was talking about, which does capture the $30,000 that is currently required, and it's a edited version of condition number four. Bear with me as I read through this. "The applicant shall contribute to the provision of new public parking in the Tahoe City area through payment of an amount equal to the estimated cost of providing the spaces in the area. The three spaces, parking spaces, are based on the proposed addition of 594 square feet of office space being added, with a ratio of one space per 250 square feet." And this is a new language. "The applicant shall provide an initial payment in the amount of $10,000 for the specific purpose of assisting with the funding of parking and/or transit efforts within the Tahoe Basin. Annually for the next four years, the applicant shall also make a payment of $5,000. Upon completion, the original payment of $30,000 will be fully satisfied. In order to ensure timely payment, the applicant shall record a payment obligation note with language provided by the DRC within 30 days of the approval. Failure to make any of the agreed-upon payments by the due dates will result in processing of a revocation of the variance." And then we have findings attached.
I think we ought to ask if any of these...
I'd like to ask, can I ask...
If it's not palatable, we'll just deny it and get out of here.
Can I ask the attorney just another quick question? Because on the payment schedule now, would that require all kinds of extra finances when I'm getting our 30,000 upfront? Or would that satisfy the 30,000 without any additional, you might say, conditions or clarification?
You want me to go forth? So the findings would be, they would attach to not denying the appeal, but accepting the appeal with a modified conditions. So your findings are basically, they wouldn't be for denial anymore, it would be for accepting the appeal, and that's how the findings would be written?
They'd have to be changed, okay.
Right, and then your findings would be articulated as to why that modified payment structure or a payment plan satisfied the condition, which would be less extensive or exhaustive than they would be if you were not recouping the $30,000 amount.
Okay, well, at this time, Mr. Davis, we've been having some discussions here, and I guess it's your time now to let us know what you're thinking. Sorry about that.
Well, unfortunately, I haven't had much time to think about this. I heard it for a three-minute brief conversation at the end of the day yesterday, so I'm not I would need at least 24 hours to think about it, talk to my attorney.
Okay. Well, I think we're pretty well bound to making a decision today. Is that correct?
It's up to the planning commission. It's up to the commissioners what you decide.
Yeah, I would prefer, I guess, to have the option of the one or the other, so that I could figure out which is the best plan to go forward with. Either the 10, 5, 5, or the 20 now.
What's the commission's thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, I have, and I say this, it's hard for me to say this, because I love negotiations and let's make a deal kind of things. But we have requirements in place for parking. They're not met. As much as I'm not a big fan of in lieu fees, I think it's the only way that parking can be achieved out there, because nobody is going to sell you a space. It just isn't feasible. But from what an actual space costs to create now versus what is being collected, we're not recouping one space, and that is something that somebody somewhere, when these actually get built, is going to have to subsidize. I have a hard time backing up on this when the costs keep going forward. We're not meeting the goals. If the goals are wrong, those need to be addressed. But stuck with those goals as we are now, this is backing up, not going forward, and I have a hard time doing that.
You say, any alternatives are backing up?
I'd say the further reduction in fees. If a current parking space were to be acquired and constructed today, we're talking $37,000 for one space.
Right. So I hear you...
So I would have a hard time...
Denying the appeal?
I would have a hard time supporting a drastic reduction in fees and/or an extended period of time repaying.
Do you want to make a motion?
I agree.
Well, let's see if anybody else has a comment.
I agree. Well, I'm just going to say I agree with Mr. Mouse.
Okay. Larry, do you have a comment?
Well, no, I just, I hate to back away from the progress I thought we were making, and it looks like maybe there's a lack of support for providing any options to move forward. I agree that, you know, there's spaces to create a space. I'm sure the numbers that we've heard are pretty accurate. However, an awful lot of the spaces in this particular case, in this community, are on public land, the Forest Service and county and other places. And so you mitigate some of the actual land cost, and you get down to more of a question of hard construction costs on a per-space item, and I think it's considerably less because of that in some areas. I don't know where to take this. I thought we could give the applicant the choice of the pay now or pay later, and let the...and if it gets appealed to the board, well, then the board can decide to do differently, I guess. But I just, I guess what I... But I, I just, I guess what I'm hoping for is to get as many options out there that it can be considered. It's going to be a very difficult thing to unring the bell in reality because the facility's there. We permitted it and let it go forward. And it's constructed and then finished, and so.
And the conditions run with the land?
The, the conditions run with the land.
Is that not correct?
That's correct.
It's not like a subdivision map where when you find that the conditions are all met and you're done. It's, it's, the conditions run with the land. So, so the fact that it wasn't done 12 years ago is a mistake. It's unfortunate. It does confuse the hell out of the issue. But basically, it's interest-free financing for this period of time.
I agree. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and, if there's a motion, make it.
Well, I'll make a motion that would deny the appeal and uphold his own administrative decision, deny the variance modification according to that number supported by the finding stated in the staff report that was mailed to us here.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Oh, is there any more discussion before I do the roll call? Okay, roll call.
Was that two motions?
Should we, if I can suggest, Chairman, if we, if we take two motions, the first one about denying the appeal, and then the second would be to deny the variance modification.
Well, I thought I had to make it all as one. Okay, then I'll make a motion. I'll take that motion off the table, deny the appeal.
Second.
Thank you, yes. I have a first by Mr. Rokucci and a second by Mr. Nader. So, Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll move, uphold his own administrator's decision to deny the variance modification supported by the findings as stated in the latest staff report.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Rokucci and a second by Mr. Nader. Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me see, this is subject to appeal. And it's $581. The appeal needs to be filed with the Planning Department here in Auburn, or I guess by mail within 10 days. So with that, we'll close this particular hearing and move on to the next item. Anybody need a break this time?
I could use five, three, two.
Not seeing.
Go ahead.
No, wait, I just get one from my back.
Okay. Okay, Nick? Go ahead, read through staff report.
Yes. This is Nick Trifaro, senior planner with the Planning Service Division. So the item I have before you today is the Placer Vineyards Property 4B Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map. So I'll start giving you, by giving you a background of the Placer Vineyard specific plan itself. The specific plan area is located in the southwest corner of Placer County, just adjacent to the city of Roseville. And it's located in the Dry Creek Community Plan Area. Here's the land use diagram for the specific plan. So the specific plan area covers approximately 5,230 acres and includes, would include the ultimate development of 14,132 dwelling units over a 20-year, 20 to 30-year period. The plan was approved back in 2007, underwent a comprehensive environmental review process, which included certification of an EIR, adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. There was a number of master plans that were prepared since 2007, including a sewer master plan, transit master plan, and among the others listed on the screen. On June 8, your planning commission approved the first development phase for the property and also included approval of the large lot maps. This approval covered a 1,535-acre portion of the plan area. You can see highlighted in green on this map. The properties included Property 1A, 3, 4B, 7, 12B, 15, and 19. And with this development phase approval, included approving of the development phase phasing plan, which addressed the backbone common infrastructure to serve all the properties. So this visual just depicts the preliminary community layout for the properties within the central portion of that development phase. Currently, there's five of the six applicants moving forward. Seven, Property 7, 12B, 15, 19, 1A, and 4B. Property 7 was approved by your planning commission, the small lot map, back in July 13 of this year. And Property 19 was approved on August 10. So what's being proposed today is the Property 4B Small Lot Tentative Subdivision Map. The map covers, the property covers 82.8 acres and is divided into a total of 240 lots. This includes 225 medium-density residential lots and 88 units on one commercial mixed-use lot. And I'll go into a little bit more detail in a minute, too, on the other lots in a minute of these. So Property 4B is in the central portion of the plan area, just fronting onto Baseline Road. It's a Placer Vineyard specific plan. So it's just west of Watt Avenue. And you can see in this aerial, Placer, the Placer-Sacramento County line is to the south. So there's three villages proposed. You see Village 1 on the western portion here of the map. And then there's Village 2 in the center. And then, of course, Village 3 on the eastern portion. The commercial mixed-use lot is just off of Baseline Road, just adjacent to Village 1. And that lot will actually have, provide for 31 units that will meet the 10% affordable housing requirement. And just south of it, you'll see the park, that's neighborhood park that's proposed, as well as along the southern boundary of the map, you could see the three open space lots. There's a number of onsite improvements proposed, and they're broken out to three phases to address each of the villages. The first phase, you see in blue, is the construction of 12th Street, which will be the primary access off of Baseline to the subdivision. Also with that, there'll be construction of A Street from, that will begin from 12th Street West towards Property 7. And then there will be also a signalization of the intersection with 12th and A Street. The second phase, you see in the center portion in the light yellow, would be an extension of A Street from 12th to Watt Avenue. And then signalization of A Street at the intersection of 12th and Watt Avenue. And then lastly, the Phase 1C would be to include continued improvements to A Street and Watt Avenue to serve Village 3.
Just a quick question. Where's the, where's the phasing line on that? Is there only going to be two phases?
So there's.
Or more than two?
See if I can get my light to work here. So you'll see in the blue portion of the map.
Yeah, that says Phase 1?
That's Phase 1A.
And the other whole area is Phase 2?
This is Phase 2 here, and then Phase 3, or it's called Phase 1C, is right here.
Okay.
And then Village 1, and 2, and 3, it's right there. As far as off-site improvements are concerned, there's, there'll be involvement of construction of the secondary access points to the property. This would include a 14th Street construction, which goes up to Baseline through Property 7 to the west. And then a construction of Watt Avenue, improvements to Watt Avenue at Baseline. It will also include water connections to existing Cal-Am Water Supply Line at Willer-Gun Baseline and sewer connections to the County's Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, as well as an extension or line to the lift station at Dire Lane and the future Property 16. There will also be a number of storm drainage improvements onsite and offsite. You could see in the green on the map. Some terms of CEQA compliance, as I mentioned before, EIR was certified back in 2007 for the specific plan and mitigation monitoring reporting program was adopted. Because of that, we're able to perform what is called a subsequent conformity review for the project. As allowed by CEQA, this streamlined review allows the county to rely on the past environmental documentation, the past EIR, to determine if the development is consistent with the specific plan. And no changes have occurred since the environmental document were adopted. So to perform this review, staff prepared an environmental checklist. You'll see is attachment C to your staff report. And with that checklist, we made determination if there's any change conditions that would cause the impacts to be more significant than described in the EIR. We also performed a policy consistency review. You'll find is attachment D to your staff report to determine if the project is consistent with existing specific plan policies. So based on the staff review, it was concluded that no significant changes have occurred. So further environmental review is not required. For public outreach, the project did go to West Placer MAC as an informational item on August 9. And then on September 13, it was presented as an action item. There were concerns expressed about the urban-rural interface between adjacent residential development and the plan area and the proposed specific plan development. The MAC did unanimously approve a motion to recommend that the planning commission approve the project as presented by a vote of 3 to 0. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Phase 1, will that include a signalized intersection out on Baseline?
There's, what intersection are you referring to?
12th Street, I think, isn't it?
Well, whatever street it is, but the exit to Baseline from Phase 1, will that intersection there be signalized?
Yes, it would be the intersection over by Baseline and 12th Street would be signalized.
Right there, where the blue line goes up there.
Right here in the blue.
Will that be signalized there?
Yes.
Okay. Because else I could see people never getting in or out of there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that it? Okay, thank you, Nick.
Sure, thank you.
So the applicant will offer you to make a few comments.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Alan Hirsch with LDK Ventures, owner of the property. Thank you for considering this item this morning, afternoon. We've worked over the last several years with staff, both as a member of the owners group of the Placer Vineyard specific plan and then individually with our subdivision map here. And it's been a really productive, probably a couple of years at this point that I've been involved with staff. And it's been a lot of good dialogue back and forth, which, which has, one, resulted in, in the infrastructure phasing you planned, plan you saw for Phase 1. I think that resulted in a pretty logical plan of infrastructure to support the Phase 1 developers. And then with our individual tentative map, I think we've ended up with a map that I think staff and ourselves can all be proud of. There's, there's, there's been some intensive discussions along the way. And I think, I'd like to thank staff for their professional interaction and working with us. I'd ask that you approve the map, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Let me see, at this time, I'll open it up to the public. So anybody in the audience, if you'd like to make comments, you can step forward now.
I think that means me.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas to you. Merry Christmas.
Merry season to you and Christmas. Thank you. Mike Arabedian of Placer Group Sierra Club.
Oh, Mike?
Yes.
If you can, try and hold the time down a little bit, you know? We'll give you the time you need, but, you know, normally, three to five minutes would, should probably do it unless, yeah.
Well, looking for some interaction and answers, too, so.
I was hoping it would help with my Merry Christmas comments, so.
Just noted, it is 11:28.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm just asking if you keep it brief, that'd be nice.
Thank you. Just a question about the intersection on Baseline. When will that light go in? Is it scheduled for a certain number of units? Or is there a date that'll go in right away?
I can't answer for the developer. I think I asked him, and he said with Phase 1. You know, I don't know if it's going to be with the first.
Building permit, but anyway, that Phase 1 is going to be, it's signalized.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that's correct. It'll be basically day zero with the first phase.
But how many units are built before it's actually put in? Is there?
They're working on the improvement plans for it right now.
I see. The Sierra Club, it's important we talk here because the Sierra Club supports the, the original CEQA mitigation conditions on this project. And I was not involved in that, but as I understand it, those were agreed to by the Sierra Club and by the proponents of the project and presumably the county. And so.
Talking about the specific plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The big guy, the big plan.
Well, that, I think that's the mitigation we're talking about.
Okay.
And, and so I want to cover a couple, a couple of points here. The mitigation, the mitigation that agreed to has been reduced. There is less park space now and less open space. And the staff, the staff report explains that that's because to meet the requirements, more than that isn't necessary for, under the, under the general plan. But of course, what was agreed to was based on the project as a whole. And the project justified the, the original conditions of open space and so, and parkland. So our concern is that's been changed. It's not clear how that changes our support for the mitigation. But it's, it's, the reduction of that is of great concern. And we have a similar concern about the electromagnetic fields, the EMF area that was withdrawn. Development was allowed to proceed in a certain area affected by EMF that was originally prohibited. This is really a serious concern. And the county's justification, of course, is that it's not proven that that's harmful. But we know that it has a physiological effect on our cell, the cellular structure of people and animals. You can see when it's, when we're in the field, that our cells are being affected. Now, apparently, there's no proof that it's harmful.
Well, you know, I had to ask you a question at this time. We're talking about a specific project here. Does EMF, is that specific to this project? Or is it specific to something else in the, in the area? Okay, let me ask the questions here, okay?
Well, the staff will have to answer that. I don't, staff would have to answer that question.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is you're talking about parkland and EMF zones.
Well, the reduction in parkland, the reduction in open space, and the elimination, allowing, removing the mitigation requirement that prevented development in a certain EMF zone.
Okay, and so the discussion we're having today is over a condition used tentative map specific to the area we're dealing with here, not, not the overall specific plan determination.
Are you telling me this, this doesn't cover any of those? There's no reduction of open space or parkland or EMF increase in this area?
In this project? I don't know. It's, is that what you're saying, or?
Well, we're just both talking to each other. I'm saying, you know, the staffer, the developer would know the answer to that question. But we're concerned that this project, something we agreed to and supported, the overall plan has changed. So this is not a light thing. What does it mean when, when, you know, this project suggests that mitigation requirements can be changed? can be changed, even though they've been agreed to?
Okay, I captured your comment, and so it really have an issue with the EMF in this specific project, as well as the open space in this specific project.
Reduction in open space and parkland, yes.
And so we will let the applicant or the staff answer that question.
Excellent. So the, we're also take note of a question about the PG&E pipeline that's going on on the north side of Baseline Road. I think it's a thirty-inch line that's gone in. You know, I got a notice from PG&E, "If you live or work within two thousand feet of a gas transmission pipeline, you should do various things, including if you hear your gas in your stove making some noise, you better check out, it might have to do with the pipeline or something." Anyway, the question is, it's just an informational question, if, if the project or development has some sort of monitoring or warning system built into it, if there are problems with the gas pipeline safety issue, which, which I guess would affect all of this, this particular area. So these are questions we want to raise, but have, have concerns about it. I have discussed with one of the people involved, the question of, that we, I brought up before about traffic from this going south on Watt Avenue, and we're still exploring that. So I think, I think those are the key points. The major thing to us is, you know, our role in the past that we agreed to certain mitigation, and now it's been changed.
Okay.
And what do we do, or can we do, so?
All right.
And why did it come about? Maybe staff can explain why they, they did reduce the size of the open space and park.
Okay, we'll see if any of these questions specifically deal with this part of the project right here, this project, and answer your questions. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Well, I'm getting a lot of blank stares out there. I guess...
Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing quick.
Well, it's been suggested...
Not too late.
Oh, too late.
Yeah, you're too late already, you see.
Well, in general, we would hope that if there's an answer to our question, it's given while we're still able to respond on the public, as part of the public hearing. We noticed there's a practice here at various boards that they will, they will shut off the public hearing and then tell you what they think. It would be nice to be able to respond.
Okay, well, that'll be up to the chairman, and so, at any rate, I'll close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commission. Oh, just a minute, applicant. If you would like to address any of these issues that have come up, this would be the time to do it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Michael Smith, I'm with McCain-Somms. We prepared the tentative map for the proposed project. The tentative map for the project is consistent with the approved specific plan, originally approved in 2007 and amended in 2015 through the normal process requiring public and private input. The project is consistent with the approved MMRP, which was modified by the board late last year. There was one mitigation measure which was removed by the board. It's the condition relating to the EMF which was described. There are no towers within the vicinity of this project. I think it's primarily was related to the larger corridors that you'll see on the western part of the plan area. So we feel that we're consistent with what has been approved, the specific plan and the mitigation measure was removed, were both, as I say, went through the public process. Ultimately, the MMRP went to the board. Specific plan, I believe, was considered by the planning commission and the board, so we're consistent with both of those. And lastly, the condition, or the intersection on Baseline Road will be signalized from day one. Each intersection on Baseline Road gets installed right from the beginning, as was noted by Mr. Rokucci. It's very hard to make a left-hand turn onto baseline from the south without a signal in place, so staff has proposed conditions, applicant has agreed to the conditions, and the intent is to install them. Are there other questions that we can help with?
Okay, I think a lot of the questions really were dealing with the big, specific plan.
Correct.
And so, I don't know if we had specific issues there, but that related to this particular project.
Right, no, I don't, I don't think that we do. The comments that related to items that have been previously been considered and approved by the bodies were consistent with those, so I don't think they apply at the current time to this particular subdivision.
Okay. And then, Mike, you brought up traffic on Watt Avenue, that would have been, that was addressed in the specific plan, and so this project is in line with the traffic analysis there?
Yes, when we did the development phasing plan for the first phase, which came before the planning commission earlier this year, there were traffic studies done at that point to support the infrastructure proposed to be constructed for this area. Based on those traffic studies, the improvements that will eventually be made on Watt Avenue were not required for these particular groups of projects.
Okay.
So I would anticipate a future development phase will reach a threshold where those improvements would be required in conformance with the specific plan.
Okay. You had a comment or question?
Well, you mentioned that last year, the board, or Board of Supervisors changed one condition. What was that again?
There was a request by the owners' group to modify one of the mitigation measures in the MMRP program, and that was the MMRP measure related to the EMF studies. The owners' group approached and put in an application to remove that. It was processed through planning, there was an environmental study, and ultimately, because it was the MMRP, I believe it had to go to the board. The board considered the application and the evidence submitted, and elected to remove that mitigation measure. So the current MMRP is one less measure than the original one in 2007.
MMRP, what?
Mitigation and monitoring reporting program, I think it was.
And that was, that was modified when?
It was originally approved in 2007, and it was modified last year, I believe, 2016.
Okay.
It was a separate action that was processed.
Okay, and that been all processed through and approved by the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess what I'm hearing is that, basically, the issues that you're bringing up, Mr. Garabedian, have already been, would you say, litigated through the approval of the specific plan and any changes to that by the Board of Supervisors, and any court hearing that would happen along the way? And so I'm not hearing any of these specific issues related to this project, which is...
Page two of the staff report's second paragraph, that's where it talks about the reduction of open space and parkland. That's why I'm asking the question.
Okay, maybe, maybe our staff attorney can help us out, or help Mr. Garabedian out in terms of the issues we're talking about here.
Yeah, I think what Mr. Garabedian is referring to are past actions by the commission and/or board regarding this specific plan, or any specific plan amendments that were proposed at the time. And so those have already been, you know, discussed, approved, adopted. So what the commission is tasked with today is looking at this vesting tentative subdivision map, to ascertain whether or not it's consistent with the prior specific plan approvals and certified EIR documents.
So the opportunity to challenge those items that he's brought up have already passed?
Correct. Unless, for instance, someone was to find that what's being proposed today is not consistent with those plans, you know, that would be a discussion item. What staff is saying is, these are proposed in conformance with those plans.
Okay.
That was on January sixth, 2015. That's that second paragraph on page two that Mr. Garabedian was, was referring to. That's when, that's when the Board of Supervisors made the modifications to the parkland.
Okay, well, I don't know if that answer is acceptable, but I think that's the answer. So at any rate, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the commission, and you can ask any questions you want of staff or the applicant, and if not, then we entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, barring any comment or questions from the commission, I'd like to take a stab at a motion.
Okay. It looks like it might be, have a couple of motions, yeah.
Yes, we would like to have two separate motions, please.
So I would motion that the planning commission take the following actions, subject to the conditions of approval attached to the report, attachment E. That one, we determine the potential impacts of the proposed property 4B Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map, which is part of the Placer Vineyard's specific plan development phase, are within the scope of analysis of the 2007 Certified Placer Vineyard's Final Environmental Impact Report, supported by the following findings, A through G. Can I do that, or do I need to read them all?
That's sufficient to say A through G.
Findings A through G in the staff report.
Second? Oh, Larry did. I'll give it to Larry.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Severson. Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could continue?
Yep.
Motion that we approve the Placer Vineyard's property 4B Small Lot Vesting Tentative Subdivision Map that will create 240 lots, including 225 medium-density residential lots and one commercial mixed-use lot, 6.4 acres, with 88 dwelling units. In addition, the Small Lot Vesting Tentative Map will create one neighborhood park, four acres, three open-space lots, 15.3 acres, and 10 landscape lots, four acres, within the previously approved Placer Vineyard's specific plan area, subject to the conditions of approval, attachment E, and supported by findings A through G in the staff report.
Your turn. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Nader. Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, this decision is appealable to the Board of Supervisors, and anybody wishing to appeal it will need to, within 10 days, report back to the planning department here in Auburn, as well as accompany that with a $581 check. So, thank you. And we'll, maybe, are we going to take a break here, or move on?
We can move on. That's me.
Okay. I'm not hearing any urgent...
We should continue on, I gotta go for a minute.
Okay.
Be right back.
I'd suggest just a five-minute recess, just because the next item might, might be a little lengthy.
Okay. We'll take a five-minuter here. My microphone's on here. Yeah, we're assembled here again. And at this time, the Placer County is working on a housing element that deals with various economic and housing-type issues, particularly the affordable housing. And so with this, we have, let me see, it looks like we might have a different person than Shawna. Shawna?
Yes.
Okay, we have Shawna, who is a principal, Purvines, who is a principal planner with the county, relatively new. And so, do you want to kick this off for us?
I'm going to ask Jennifer Merchant from the CEO's office to go ahead and kick it off for us.
Okay. This is Jackie.
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, okay.
Good morning, Chair Johnson, members of the Planning Commission. Jennifer Merchant, I'm the Deputy County Executive Officer with Placer County, mostly cover the eastern Placer County area. So I wanted to get started this morning by setting a little bit of context about why we're doing what we're doing with our housing work plan. And talk, the plan today is to talk a little bit with you about the actions that your staff has undertaken to implement the work plan. As you know, your commission and the Board of Supervisors every eight years is responsible with developing a housing element. And in the previous years, a housing element has been largely implemented by the Community Development Resources Agency, but also housing projects implemented with redevelopment money in the Tahoe area and in the western and south Placer area. And with the demise of the Redevelopment Agency, we've really been struggling to determine, other than the large projects that are required to do housing through the specific plan, how are we going to implement housing? We all know that there's a housing crisis in the state of California. Placer County has not escaped that. We have significant challenges for our residents to find housing, I'd say, more heightened and on the eastern end of the county, but certainly there are challenges with affordability for housing, whether it be rental or ownership on this end of the county. Back in 2016, Placer County worked with Nevada County and the town of Truckee on the eastern side of the county to create a housing needs assessment. That assessment was presented to the Board of Supervisors in October of last year. And shortly thereafter, because of the results of that study showing a real crisis on the eastern side of the county, the County Executive Office worked to develop a housing unit, which is something that's been recommended by leaders in the housing and affordable housing industry to really put a focus on affordable housing. So Placer County engaged in that last year. As the Deputy CEO, I am the leader of the housing unit countywide, not just in the north like Tahoe area. And so I assembled a multidisciplinary team to really approach housing from the variety of different areas where we meet housing. So it's a land use issue, but it's also a social issue, and it's an economic issue. And it is a development issue. So we assembled a team with myself as the leader. Shawna Purvines, who is your principal planner, is the key staff person who provides the land use expertise on the housing side. Sherry Conway, who is our Economic Development Director, is on the team, as well as Jeff Brown, representing Health and Human Services. We also have representation from the Facilities Department, as you'll see in the presentation a little bit later on. There are some real opportunities on Placer County property, specific to this site, the Placer County Government Center, to develop workforce housing, because we can draw down the cost of that, because we own the land. So we're really looking for opportunities. The housing work plan has a lot of tasks associated with it. Some of those are underway, including working with our stakeholders and partners in the area to provide housing for our residential workforce. In eastern Placer County, we're engaged in some specific actions with the Mountain Housing Council, which we are now a member of with other private sector and public sector entities, to really create the full spectrum of viewpoint around housing to attack it from a lot of different directions so we can be successful. So with that context, I'm going to turn it over to Shawna, who you're expecting to see today, to provide the bulk of the presentation. And I'll be available over there to answer any questions later on, should you have any.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All yours. Good afternoon, by one minute. So, as Jennifer said, we're going to just do an overview of some of the work that we've been working on, primarily over the last year, for myself since March, when I was able, had the opportunity to join Placer Community Development Resource Agency and Planning Services to work on the housing. Today, I'm going to walk through a few points, talk a little bit about what is affordable housing, to just kind of give some context to it, some best practices that we have learned over the next few months, start defining our local problem, and then really kind of focus in a little more on the work plan that we set forth, the board reviewed and agreed upon for our efforts over this next year. I'm also going to talk a little bit about the in-lu fee study that we did, and we're going to round it out with a presentation from our Facilities Group to talk about the DeWitt Center, the actual Placer County Government Center Master Plan, and some of the work that's being done there. So we get asked this question a lot, what is affordable? So this is a table that we have ready and available. Anytime we're talking about affordability, we're always generally talking about the 30, 50, 80, 100, 120 percent of the area's median income. These come straight from the housing and urban development out of the federal government. For Placer County, the median income is 76,100. So it's pretty simple math. We just look at what 80 percent of 76, and that does us what low income is, and so on and so forth for the other areas. The middle ones here are probably what we're really, this is kind of our Lippman's Test about what is affordable out there today. So this is rent, maximum rent. This includes utilities. So to actually get to a rent price, you would first have to subtract the amount of utilities from that to know what the rent would be. And then this is the for-sale price of a unit. So you can tell, anything that is considered 120 percent or moderate and below is considered affordable housing. And for, generally speaking, Placer County, and I'm going to go into some more local area examples, 364,000 is the maximum sale price for what we would call an affordable unit in Placer County. That's assuming a family of four earning roughly $91,300. On the western portion of the county, we're actually kind of close to that. Average ra, home sale prices are about 440 right now, so albeit it's a little high, you know, it's in the ballpark, and that's an average. There's definitely some products out there that are in this range. On the eastern side, it's a much bigger difference. Right now, the average price is roughly eight times higher than the income can afford. So that's a big difference, and that's something that we're definitely going to need to look at as we go forward to meet the needs and the workforce that we have up there. So best practices, these are the ones that we have been following as we've pulled together the unit over the last year. One, create the unit. Two, define the local problem. We are still in the process of doing this. We're looking at all kinds of data. We're asking ourselves what data to look at even, let alone just looking at the data, to see what really is our need here. Identifying some local solution, mapping some housing hotspots, aligning with some of our stakeholder groups, and executing a strategy that has measurable performance standards. That was something that was really important to us. So I'll be going through these as we go. The housing unit, as Jennifer mentioned, and we set some priorities for ourselves. Primarily, the three priorities are to eliminate those barriers to the development of housing, improve employment growth by having housing available for those employers that want to come here and locate here. They need their employees to be able to find a place to live. And then to try to shorten those commute distances for people who live and work in Placer County. So those were really our goals as we're going forward. We did set ourselves, I'm sorry, our priorities. Our goals really are set forth in the housing element. We've highlighted four of them here. There's actually 11 goals in the housing element that we work from. So in defining that problem, really the number one is funding. I mean, if we had enough funding, you could build it. But we, no jurisdiction really does. In the past, most of California jurisdictions relied on redevelopment. There was the required 20 percent set aside. Now we don't have that. The county does have a housing trust fund. There is funding that does come into it through various different in-lu fees, or in some instances, there may be grants available for it. There's about a million dollars in there right now. About three-quarters of that are from projects that have come in from the eastern portion of the county. But we really are uncertain to what the future revenue holds. And we also are facing right now some pretty substantial changes in state and federal policy. So we're trying to figure out really kind of that, what the, you know, looking at that crystal ball, what really is, what is before us. Staff, with the loss of the Redevelopment Agency, there were five dedicated staff. And we've had one staff to date since then who's been kind of just keeping things together. Even though the Redevelopment Agency went away, the programs, the responsibilities, the reporting, the monitoring, all still went on. So that, we had one staff member who was still maintaining that going forward, and then with the addition for SEDRA, was my position in March, that has now made that staff too. So we also, again, have formed that housing unit, and we're now trying to utilize resources from all the different departments in the county. The third one is we're also paying attention to the real estate market. We have short-term rental issues up in the eastern portion of the county. We know that rent and purchase prices are starting to go up faster than wages are going up. Our land values are still fairly low. The product, we got a building, it's going good, but if it's just the raw land, it's a little harder. We're not seeing those values increase like we did see the products. Also, changes in trends. We're seeing a lot more singles, seniors. We talk about the millennials a lot that are just wanting to see maybe different product types, as opposed to what we've seen in the past. And kind of the last one that we've been looking at for looking at the local problem is our land development costs. So to get to that residential value, we looked at, you know, the sales price of a unit minus that land development cost, minus the cost of the building permits, kind of gives you that residential value. The land development costs, you know, we've got a kind of a truncated list here on the side, are all things that go into, you know, breaking up the cost of housing. And we did this both on the western and eastern side of the county to try to get a sense of really what is driving the high, some of the higher cost of the units that are out there. So what we have here is kind of the average sale. Now it's broken down a little bit further by rural residential, low-density residential, medium-density residential, and high-density residential. And as you can see, the high-density residential is a little bit cheaper, and that's just really an economies of scale that's happening there. You're also seeing more custom development in these upper end. The difference between the cost and the sale is, of course, the profit. So you can see, one of the largest costs that we're seeing is building and labor and building costs, physical sticks and bricks to build these. I think I, there was a question asked about earlier, you know, what the county is doing as far as maybe labor. And we do have some, you know, programs through the Economic Development Office, they have a workforce effort that is looking to try and support construction trade labors and moving that forward, but that is not a primary function of the county, to train up contractors. So we're hoping that, you know, that is something through Sierra College and through other efforts, trade unions, and those, that they're able to hopefully get more contractors and get more of those craftsmen back into this area. I think a lot was lost during that last recession, and we're still climbing back out of that. Then you do have the cost, the holding, oops, sorry, the holding cost down here of just holding the land, taxes, refinancing, those types of things. Then you, this is the land cost itself in these types of areas, and then these are the costs of the permits and the fees. So those are your impact fees as part of that. We are just getting this data. We're just starting to analyze it ourselves, so, you know, we don't necessarily have answers out of it, but if, the idea is, is if we know what really maybe what's causing it, maybe we could figure out some more productive ways of how to affect it. This is the exact same thing, just on the eastern side. You can see we're, this is the larger sale price, just more expensive up there. The difference up there is the cost of land is substantially higher. So in comparison, the fees are a much lesser percent of the overall cost of that development. These are all in 2016 values as well. It was the most recent data that we had available. So we're also looking for identifying some solutions. We're focused on increasing a range of housing types, as we talked about, the market's changing a little bit, a few more seniors, a few more millennials, a few more singles. So it is, in addition to single-family homes, which we believe is still probably going to be a primary driver for most of housing going forward, but, you know, what are some of those other ones that we could bring? And I said new and used. What I mean by used is looking at existing stock that maybe through rehab can be repurposed again, or looking at things commercial, that maybe it's just not marketable as commercial anymore, and converting that to some type of housing that we might be able to use. But that's just an example of some of the different types of solutions that we're looking at. To the housing work plan. So this was the first annual work plan. We took it to the Board of Supervisors on August 8th, so we really kicked it off about that time, albeit there's quite a number of items in there. Broken down into four primary categories. One is planning and research, other is incentives and regulations. We're also funding and resources, and then legislative advocacy and communications, and that's where our partnerships are as well. We identify what we believe will be the staffing requirements and the funding requirements to complete this this year as well. So I'm just going to walk through kind of quickly each of the different sections, some of the highlights, some of the things we're working on on each of those. So planning and research, and we are completing a very comprehensive land supply assessment. This is to look at all the different parcels that may be available for development of housing. We're particularly focusing in on public lands, those lands that may be at this point in time are purchased by the public, but we just don't need them anymore, whether it be county lands, which of course are easier for us, but also up in the Tahoe area, we're looking at other public agency lands. We're identifying housing opportunity areas. Housing doesn't belong everywhere, and certain types of housing certainly don't belong everywhere. But there are specific areas where a higher-density type of housing may make sense, or workforce housing, or employee housing very well makes sense. And we're trying to find where those nodes may be so that, you know, we can focus in on those as opposed to kind of that blanket, one-size-fits-all type of approach. on those as opposed to kind of that blanket, one-size-fits-all type of approach. We're also working on completing the Tahoe Economic Profile Report. There was actually a South Placer Economic Profile Report. What this looked at was what the estimated job growth is going to be. And then, based on that job growth and the types of jobs that are going to be coming in, what type of housing they were going to need. So, we are wrapping those up this month. I believe those will be released to the board later in January, and we will make sure that you get copies of those as well. We also released a request for qualification for the Placer County Government Center for an affordable housing site, and I'm going to go ahead and let Paul talk more about that at the end of the presentation. And then, something Crystal spoke to you about in October was the work that's being done on the Sunset Area Plan and the Placer Ranch Specific Plan. There's a number of kind of creative housing ideas that we're looking at in there as well in hopes to ensure that we have a good job housing balance in that area. We're also looking at incentives, so vacation homes. We all know there's a whole lot of secondary homes up in the Tahoe area. The idea is to see if there's an incentive to those property owners for maybe renting those out on a longer-term basis. And a longer-term basis can be anything from, you know, two, three months. It can be just a seasonal type of thing, or, you know, maybe there, it truly is more of a long-term basis for like a year or more of a rental. So, we're in the process of preparing a survey to send out and see what would entice them, what would be those incentives that they may be interested in to allow their current second home to be used more for workforce or employee housing. And we're also looking at, after the adoption of the amendments to the second dwelling, is some ways to encourage that or incentivize that to go forward, whether it's amnesty programs for those that are already built and maybe not permitted, up to prototype plans. We've talked to some other jurisdictions who prepared these prototype plans. They're basically off-the-shelf plans, save you time and money when you come in. We found probably generically that if they're just, you know, four or five sets of plans that anybody can come and pull, they're not getting used nearly as much. But, when they're part of a subdivision, as part of a product type, where you, they're kind of built into, you know, the home that you buy as part of a brand-new subdivision has this alternative to where you can have, say, a second unit or a unit above a garage or those types of things, they tend to get used more. They're already designed for you, they're already ready to go, and they already fit within the character of that neighborhood. So, we're looking at maybe implementing some of these as well as part of those plans. Regulations, this is the one you'll probably hear most from me over this next year. So, the idea is to start going through our zoning ordinances and our other policies and codes and determine where we might be getting in our own way, where we may, you know, have regulations that are constraining that development of housing. And it could be, it could still be secondary dwelling units, it could be duplexes or triplexes, something very small, not always kind of the larger apartment complexes, but where we might be able to, with those changes, be able to reduce those regulations and thereby incentivize additional development of homes. By doing that, our intent is to stay, again, within that character of the community. So, the idea is not to come in and increase densities in the middle of a single-family neighborhood so that you've got towers of apartments. It's really to be able to work within the parameters that are already there. We talked a little bit about this at the beginning. The funding is, at this point, we are looking at just turning over every stone we can, trying to find what kind of funding we might be able to pull together and help to offset the cost or provide gap financing for some of the affordable housing development. We're also, once we, I talked a little bit about those housing hotspots. Once we determine where those are, we would like to prepare some performa's on those properties specifically to see if we can figure out, kind of going back to that cost of development, where we might be able to really, in those particular areas, help the most in getting something off the ground there. And then, we also, this past year, met with the board and the public on an affordable housing in-lu fee program. Go through this fairly quickly, but feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So, the housing element does provide an in-lu fee option, both for affordable housing, both on the east and the west. And to date, the county has accepted in-lu fee offers, or mitig- as mitigation for projects. They've been negotiated on a case-by-case basis. So, the idea was is to prepare a study, an NEXA study, to determine if we're going to continue going forward and do an in-lu fee program, what's that maximum justifiable fee that we could look at. The intent, of course, for the fee is to mitigate for those impacts of, for the demand for affordable housing, and the fee would be used to increase the supply. We would be collecting the fee, we'd be going into the trust fund, and we'd be using it to increase the supply of affordable housing. These fees are based on 2015 information. So, where we're at today is we're in the process of updating those studies. The studies were completed in 2016. Early next year, we will update these studies and then provide, so, sorry, wrong button. We'll provide some updated numbers for the maximum justifiable fee. They were done a little different because the policies are done differently, both in east and west. East is really trying to achieve employee housing, where the west is more of a workforce housing. It's more a requirement of specific plans and general plan amendments where they're increasing from, say, a low-density to a high-density type of product. But, what they both are intended to do is to provide that option as the housing element allows for, that in-lu fee, and to be able to have a consistent fee that's applied equitably as opposed to this case-by-case negotiable. So, the reports actually did look at the feasibility of it. On the western county side, the fee did, it was determined the fee would make some locations probably infeasible, but as a whole, it probably would not impact the overall development and the requirements for affordable housing on the western side. Eastern, it did. They actually did find that it would be infeasible if the fee is greater than that two percent sales price. So, should the board decide to go forward with adoption of an in-lu fee based on a study such as this, that would be something they would, you know, want to take into consideration before adopting that final fee. Again, that maximum fee is just the maximum. It is not what was, what would be required to be adopted. The report provided a broad range of fee options for the board to consider, and there's probably, you know, half dozen more options that the board could consider. I think, once the revised numbers are back, and now that we've had an opportunity to really hear some public input on this, those, we'll be able to pull together some options for the board that they can consider next year. As I mentioned, we were out in the public, and we received some really good feedback. You know, there was comments that a consistent fee would be good. There were comments that no fee, that you know in-lu fee, that the project should just be built. There was concern that a fee on non-residential development would stifle that kind of commercial development. So, we really got a lot of great feedback. We also took it to the board on that August eighth, and we got feedback from the board. And by and large, the board, too, did not really support an in-lu fee. However, they definitely understood that it is an, that it may be needed, particularly in smaller projects, that it's just infeasible to build it. The board really supported the project's building, building their obligations. So, with that, the next step is update the fees that we have, come back early next year to the board with the fresh data, and some recommendation based on both the public comments we received and the board's, you know, information that they provided us on August eighth for them to consider. This point, it doesn't change the policies of the general plan that allow an in-lu fee option, but if the board were to move forward, it would just mean we would have a fee based on an NEXA study that would be provided equitably across all projects. Towards the end of our work program, we have legislative advocacy. The county, it is a housing and economic development, our primary focus of the county's legislative advocacy work. And you probably heard a lot this past year about the package of housing element laws that went through early 2017. I think there was one hundred and fifty-five housing bills up at the state. About thirty-three of them were actually approved by the end of the year. We hear about the package of fifteen, which are some of the bigger changes, but all of them broke down into these four categories. One was financing affordable housing. That was SB two and SB three primarily. There was the fee on tops of property tax transfers. That fee will be collected, it will go into a fund at the state, and then, it will be dispersed back out on, based on various different methodologies to jurisdictions to help update their housing elements and to help invest into affordable housing. The other one was a bond measure that won't go until next fall, and if that's passed, that's four billion dollars, about three billion for regular, normal, affordable housing, about one billion for veterans' housing. That, if passed, then that would be funded available also. The other two, facilitating private market housing production, that was SB thirty-five primarily, that kind of streamlined the approval process. Basically, if a project met certain criteria, it kind of got to pass all the discretionary review and just went straight to a ministerial to a building permit. The caveat there was, though, if the builder wanted to do that, their requirement was to pay prevailing wage on their project. So, you know, that'll be something that they'll have to take into consideration if they want to, they want to pull that trigger. Increasing accountability for accommodations, this was, the bulk of this was changes to the housing element. That'll be required as our next update. So, as Jennifer mentioned, we'll be coming back in 2020 to 2021 with revised housing element for adoption, for the mandated 2021 adoption and update of that housing element. And it will require a very, a more robust review of our land inventory and availability of those to meet our regional housing needs allocation. And then, the last one was preserving existing and subsidized housing. So, if it's already here, what can we do to keep it going and keep it on the ground as opposed to, say, losing it or just relying on continuing to build new? And then, communication and partners was the last part of this process, and although probably the most important. So, the, now that we're starting to learn and get our arms wrapped around this a little bit more locally, what the problem is and what some possible solutions are, the idea is to do all those things to get the information out and to invite more partners in and continue to talk about what this will mean for Placer County as we go forward. You, Crystal touched on most of these. I put this map in here with Western Placer. Right now, we've got, I want to say upwards of about twenty thousand entitlements in this area, residential entitlements in this area. It sounds like we'll be getting a more firm number going forward, and roughly ten percent of those are already obligated for affordable housing. If you add in the Sunset Area, which is not adopted yet, that's going to, you know, increase that number. As we go forward with the implementation, these are probably twenty and thirty years out as this builds out, there will be the necessity to kind of track and monitor that implementation of the affordable housing as part of that. Eastern Placer major projects, there's quite a bit going on up there. Probably the most recent one is the board did approve the final map for Schaefer's Mill, which included a affordable housing site for fifty-six units of affordable housing. And the applicant is preparing an application to the state for roughly about sixteen million dollars to help fund that. The application should be going in early next year. If funded, we could see construction beginning in 2019 on those fifty-six units. That was an obligation of that project when it was adopted in 2004. With that, I'm going to stop. I'm going to turn it over to Paul to give you a quick update on the Placer County Government
Thanks, Shawna. Paul Breckenridge, senior architect with Department of Public Works and Facilities. I am the master plan, or the, I should say, the project manager for the Government Center Master Plan. Let's see, so, just to give you a little bit of background, so, we've been working on this project for about a year and a half now, and it's mainly looking at the needs for the county here on the two-hundred acres for the next twenty, twenty-five years. And so, we've got, done a, actually, very exhaustive study to figure out what those needs are and actually coming up with areas on the campus that we can consider using for other things, much, including residential, which is what I'll be talking about today. So, as we've kind of transitioned from, I think, the big-box retail store that was intended on the campus here previously, we've looked at things that have risen needs, if you will, on the areas of the campus that are significant needs here in the county, much like what Shawna has talked about, and those have risen to the top as far as how we've approached the master plan for the campus here, especially as it's county-owned land, and there's lots of opportunity associated with leveraging that for projects. Supervisors have looked at the, at least the draft a couple times to date, and so, they've weighed in, given us some good feedback. They like the direction and where we're headed. So, the current progress, we're about halfway through, and we've got about another year to go before we're through the EIR process and the actual implementation planning in some of the more specific areas. So, we do have a, an EIR process moving ahead. We've gone through the NOP preparation, circulation, some scoping with the community. So, again, we'll probably be in through third or fourth quarter of 2018 before we're complete. So, the board gave us direction on moving ahead with the EIR on a program level. They also gave us direction to move ahead with two project levels of reviews, including what could be a new HHS building, which is about a hundred, could be a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet here on the campus, and then, an affordable housing project. So, we've got a three-acre site that we're looking at for that one, so we're doing a project-level review for that particular site. Williams and Patton are consultant, they're getting into design guidelines as part of the more detailed approach to the latter part of the master plan. So, the housing project, as it comes online, which looks like it will be the first project out of the gate as it relates to the master plan. So, the look and feel is going to be very critical to us, me as an architect, the county, as it relates to its placement on the campus and setting the tone for future projects, including other residential projects into the future. So, we will be back to the Planning Commission to talk to you about some entitlements, some other things that, as we looked at the master plan, things on the campus that we were wanting to change, some land use, some designations, and in particular, the notion of the Town Center Commercial Overlay District, that to get some increased densities, that to leverage the land in a much bigger, better way, we're looking to have this overlay district on the CPD, the Commercial Plan Development Location, on the east side of the campus. So, we'll bring that back to you and let staff and myself will be preparing some information to talk to you about on that side. So, the master plan covers the full two-hundred acres, so just a quick aerial as we are today with Bell Road to the north, Home Depot to the east, Atwood to the south, our new animal services facility to the west, designated open space on that side of the campus as well. So, you can see, just from the aerial, there's a lot of area that is potential for both our county needs in the future and what could be some other uses. So, this current draft of the master plan, so, same orientation with the site, with Bell Road to the north, Home Depot located here, Atwood to the south, and we've taken this approach that is, as we've gathered the information on the needs for the county, including what could be a consolidation of services at Full Wyler, bringing all of those departments and divisions, including the board, sometime in the future, up to the Government Center and locating that on the campus, so we've got a reserved space for that. So, looking at kind of the needs into the future, and then, so that's kind of to the east of the campus, so that's kind of on this side. We've got kind of a central spine that then delineates some more private and museum functions, if you will. We've got one location to celebrate the duet heritage at the campus here. But, this side of the campus, we're showing the Golden Rod and the other colors here is more residential, mixed-use, community functions that would be more privately oriented. This side of the campus, and we're using County Center Drive, and just to orient you, we're right here, so here's CDRC. County Center Drive really just pokes into the campus slightly right now. We're going to take County Center Drive and push that into the campus, and that becomes a way, big wayfinding element, big articulation element into the campus. So, that County Center Drive pushes into the campus, terminates down here at the Town Center area, if you will. We've got a Central Green, what could be a community and event center that we see a huge need for, meeting space on the campus here. And then, bookending, the main entrance to the campus would be that placeholder for the board, the executive, county council, all those things down at Full Wyler at this location. location. So, HHS, which is the project level review, is at this location. So, if this is the AJC, the Fab Building, CDRC, the existing newer facilities, we would take kind of this site location for that to start, again, setting the tone for the, the master plan into the future. So, on the residential side, the Golden Rod, and we're looking at several hundred units over time. So, we're really looking to leverage the site, using that Town Center overlay to really increase our densities. Obviously, we've got to be compatible with the overflight for the airport, but we really want to push the envelope, if you will, and staff, Shawna and others have been very helpful in helping us kind of look at the master plan in a much bigger, better way on that side of the campus, so that as we look to increase the, the unit count, which is right now fifteen to twenty, we want to get into maybe the thirty unit or more counts on campus here, so that we can maximize that, that benefit. So, right now, our three acre site that Shawna had mentioned is right here, and that is out of the gate. So, the board gave us direction to move ahead with that through an RFQP process, and we've got developers that are putting together proposals as we speak, that will be due on the ninth, and we'll be taking those to the board in February, or one of those, hopefully the selected, the recommended selection to the board in February. So, we're looking at potentially sixty, eighty to a hundred units on that site. We're looking at maybe a four-story component, four-story height on that facility. But the three acres, again, we're trying to maximize, and it will be affordable. So, the direction of the developers has been from an affordability perspective. So, I'm excited. This is a direct result of the, the work that, you know, Shawna and the housing unit, Jennifer's housing unit, has put together. This will be a great incubator or place to really study the various components of the housing element and what's going on with that all throughout the process. So, they're going to be dropping in, the developer will be dropping into the process, EIR process in, in February, and we'll continue that project level review moving ahead. And so, when we get to the end of the master plan project, hopefully we'll have almost a shovel-ready project ready to go for the campus here. And again, leading, setting the tone for what could be other sites on the campus for many more units of, could be market rate and affordable housing.
Mr. Chairman, Paul?
Yeah.
When you say you've been talking with developers about that property, is the county going to sell that?
Currently, we're looking at more of a long-term ground lease, a potential long-term ground lease. That hasn't been decided. The board will have to weigh in on that. But the idea is, much like the Home Depot site, is a long-term ground lease. And what's nice about the county owning the site is that we can leverage that as part of our funding process and getting in line for other things and using that as the county's contribution, if you will. So, we're still looking at all those things. The board will still have to decide on that, but as part of the scenario for an affordable housing project, the land will be something that will be used as, as part of that package, if you will. Anything else? Okay. Any other questions on that?
Just one quick question.
Oh, sure.
I noticed a lot of area there for Adgrade Park, and is there any parking structures, you know, proposed in there?
Very, very good question. We, we looked at that, and, you know, I think the appropriateness and the cost associated with parking structures is probably better in, in say, where the land is much more valuable, if you will.
Okay.
Say, in Roseville or even, obviously Sacramento. But up here, we looked at the, the study and, and for the cost associated with going up with parking is just, was looking like too much. I think what we have looked at into the future is that even beyond the twenty, twenty-five years, that we've got these fields that if the densities wanted to grow on campus, those would be where we would put those parking structures and add additional buildings. So, we have studied that. I mean, we've studied the kind of uberization of things over the next twenty, twenty-five years, so that, that may even change things as well. But really, at this point, the cost is, is a big determinant on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Obviously, the shelter right now is on a temporary use.
Yeah.
But I guess there's no consideration that it may ultimately end up being more of a permanent facility?
Yeah, currently, the master plan shows this area as being more courtyard in, in use, if you will, in the master plan. You know, if, if the shelter continues and stays, I mean, that's, we'll all, we'll build that back into the master plan or continue with that in the master plan. But at this point, that, you know, that hasn't, obviously hasn't been determined as far as its, you know, continued future.
So, as you work your way through the EIR, that's not going to be a part of that, and it may need to be modified at some point?
It, it could be modified, yeah. And, and maybe that would be the case.
That's an amendment.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And with that, we pretty much close the presentation. So, really, it's been pretty much a whirlwind for me. As I mentioned, I got here in March, and my last count, I think there was twelve items at the board that had to do with economic development and housing that I got the opportunity to participate in. So, there's, there's been quite a bit that's, that's happened, but we have a lot to look forward to as well. And that concludes our presentation.
Okay. See, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
That, yeah, I know the priorities have been identified as far as the east side and Sunset and Dewitt, but I'm wondering, are you going to go to the various MAC committees and kind of go through what, what you're working on here fairly shortly?
Yes. I think that our, our thought was is to start that early next year. I think we really are just now getting kind of our heads wrapped around what that, what a, a plan looked like and, and what it was going to take to execute it. So, starting to talk to each of the MACs at this point and starting to get their feedback will be important.
Okay, yeah, I think so. I, you know, I frequently go up to Forest Hill.
Mm-hmm.
And in fact, I was up there this morning. But at any rate, I know from an economic standpoint, they're worried about how to keep their business district, as well as to keep jobs in the community. And it seems like, you know, the community understanding the work that you're doing would be real important in terms of how they might approach it or discuss it with you or discuss it with the county. So, that's just one example. I'm sure other communities are, are the same. So, that's why I asked the question.
Great, yes.
Chuck, could you please go back? You had a, a list of the fees on one of your slides?
The fees or the cost of development? Oh, the, those, like that?
Let's see.
The, the in-lu fee?
Five, five dollars per square foot, that stuck out in my mind.
I just, I, I have a hard time understanding how making housing in general less affordable is going to make more affordable housing. Just is, is one of those formulations that does not work in my simple head.
Feels counter.
In fact, I think it just does not work plain and simple, period.
Right.
It's, it's a failed premise to start with, and then pursuing it just is, is going nowhere. I, I hate to say that, but it's, 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 it's the truth as I know it. I just have a hard time going there. I, I have a hard time in concept with the county going into the development business also, whether it be housing or Home Depot or whatever. Any more than they should open a seven eleven somewhere. It's not what the government does well. And so, it just is, is, is an issue I have, and then starting off to say the way we're going to make housing more affordable is make housing less affordable, I don't understand.
Well, as I mentioned, that the in-lu fee is an option in the, in the general plan. It's, it's an option in the, the housing element for a mitigation. And it, it, just as you can build it onsite, build it offsite, you know, there's, there's other options as well. The, the idea here with looking at the fee today is that the county has been applying that in-lu fee and has, and has allowed people to mitigate by paying an in-lu fee, but it, it hasn't really had a, a study underneath it of what that, what the, the right amount was. So, should the county proceed, if they want to continue down that path where they want to be able to have an in-lu fee as an option, the concept here is that it probably should have a foundation for that fee.
Absolutely.
Question?
Yeah.
Yesterday at TRPA, we had the same discussion. We didn't have you there, unfortunately. But it's, it's kind of interesting what we've discovered, and I'm sure you're aware of that, is when the price of housing went up, everybody that had a low-cost housing or a worker bee sold it, made some money and moved to Reno, and then they, or outlying areas, and then they commuted. Well, I guess that reminded me that, was there any effort to use the housing that you're creating at Dewitt for employee housing as well as just outside low-cost housing? I mean, there, there is a justification to help traffic, and that's, the hand-in-glove situation that we're dealing with is to get the housing close to where the people are working so they don't have to drive so far or where there's public transit. And there's a good opportunity here to make that housing sort of a priority for county employees, as an example, that work there, to be able to work and commute close by. And I, I don't know whether they talked about that, but I certainly think it's worth considering.
We definitely talked about it, and we definitely are considering that. It's, it's, it, that having people, as you saw, one of the top priorities of the housing unit was to try to get people to live and work closer. So, this would, this would be a great opportunity, be it immediately on the campus or just even in the, in the surrounding area.
I don't know whether we can restrict it or not, but at some point in time, there's, there's certainly merit in looking at where you create the employee housing, that you create spheres of influence for it, so that you encourage those people that are renting and living there to live and work nearby. Because right now, the traffic between San Francisco and Reno is just getting tough everywhere. And we've got to find ways to work together to get, improve that. And this is an opportunity, I think, that's worth looking at. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Shawna, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the very succinct and thoughtful presentation that you made this morning. It was very well done.
Thank you.
To anybody who might want to comment on it, I would say that we're, this, this is not an action item, this is just an informational item, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public now. And so, anybody that would like to make a comment on this plan, you can step forward. I see a few people still in the audience.
Mike Arabedian, Placer Group, CR Club. Well, this is an opportunity that the, that your county is surveying different...
Survey.
This is an opportunity that the county is surveying, looking at different properties, and CR Club is an advocate for affordable housing, and we're, of course, we're suggesting that in terms of the I sixty-five corridor and other, for other purposes. We also support transit, and I, I may have missed hearing transit in your discussion, but obviously transit has to be developed to support affordable housing and people getting, getting to work. And I just wonder what the liaison there is with the, the proper authorities. Another opportunity that now that the county is making these initiatives is to deal with putting, the question of putting development in harm's way. As you know, I've been before you and the Board of Supervisors many times in terms of secondary homes now called dwell, a different kind of dwelling accessory units, I guess, subdivisions, even location of a forest management cottage of minor divisions, saying, "These should be developed and designed with fire prevention in mind." The state is going up in flames. We had the King Fire, and we're doing, Cal, Cal Fire's doing very little commenting around the edges on some things, on developments and not on the sequela, to make sure we are not putting people in harm's way, as we have, as you have approved, as the board repeatedly approves. And here, we're talking about affordable housing. So, we need to be looking at this from now, from the get-go, the map of the different places. You're looking at, had, of course, the Martyrs Valley West specific plan, a fire hazard in itself, inadequate access, you know, one regular access and an EVA, emergency evacuation route, what, seven, eight hundred units out in an area uphill slope from potential fires? A fire, you can see the scars on that hill from a major fire that burned up from Cardenley and Bay, burned up to the top of, of the hill and burned out stumps. So, the time to look at where we're putting people in harm's way, where you might be adding to that problem that the county just neglects over and over, this is a real chance to, to make sure you're incorporating that need into where we're, we're putting affordable housing. So, and I would just, I assume this is part of the normal development process that, that this will go through, but if there's any comment, comment about where we'll have a chance to have input now or later, that would be helpful.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Marcus Laduka, thirty-two hundred Douglas Boulevard. Here, just as a general member of the building industry, I represent a lot of different types of projects. I did want to make a few comments. One relative, as staff mentioned, board direction in August relative to the fee, Mr. Moss was very appropriate comments relative to, when you add a fee for affordable housing, it's always an issue because you're in essence making it less affordable to everyone else. It may not, may not make a project infeasible, and I'm really talking about West Side, not, I think the Tahoe market is a very, very different marketplace. But it goes to affordability of folks to be able to qualify for loan. Let's say if you got a five thousand dollar fee on a house, they have to come up with another thousand dollar down payment and get another loan for four thousand, increase their loan size, because builders and developers don't pay fees. Home buyers pay fees, and so, or renters, in essence, pay those. I, I think the, another aspect of the board's direction, also looking at incentives, and the commission may not be aware, your new Community Development Director, Steve Padretti, came up with a committee, a development streamlining committee that has been meeting the past year, looking at processes, because time is money. You can make lower prices if folks can get through the process. And much of the past year has been spent looking at the improvement plan process and the building permit process, and it hasn't just been involving all county departments that touch a project, but also PCWA, SPMUD, PG&E, other agencies also. And we've seen an increasing accountability in the system for getting through the plan check process and the building permit process, and that's been helpful. And we see they're going to be getting into some other areas moving forward that I think will be very beneficial to help try to look at that as in terms of incentives, as opposed to the heavy hand of fees and other requirements, which can create their own impediments. So, the counties, I think your staff's doing some, a number of other things relative to that that I think are very important. Industry's very pleased with some of those things moving forward, because that gets to the ability of being able to get projects built and, you know, on the ground and moving forward. So, we look forward to continue to work with your staff on these issues as, as Mr. Padretti's committee and other efforts of the county continue in this, this vein. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any final comments from the, recognizing this isn't a decision meeting, but any final comments from the commission?
I just want to echo Jeffrey's comment, that, that, when that thing popped up, that, that five dollars, I think it's even highlighted, and at least it looks like it is. You know, you could have a fifteen hundred square foot house, which is kind of a moderate size, it's not even large or small. It's another seventy-five hundred dollars, so it's more than Mr. Laduka's five thousand. That's a lot of money. And like, he's right, too. The developer doesn't pay. It's probably hard for a developer to get the funding to build it, but eventually, if it's built, the homeowner or the renter pays these fees. So, I don't know what the answer is, but I do think the county's on the right track for this, doing this study and work with all these agencies and, and other, other people, so.
Wouldn't be surprised to see it happen.
Thank you for the report.
Anybody else? I might, when you talk about public land, it seems like that's a good proposal to pursue. One of the issues, and I've worked for the government before, so, one of the things that I think about in public land is, once you get rid of it, to get it back when you need it costs you a lot of money. And so, getting rid of public land is something that really is a very serious decision. But what I'm hearing is like Dewitt, you know, you may have some single-family housing, you might have some larger units that would be like an apartment building. If it's single-family housing, then, you know, the, the actual cost of the house may be more affordable because it doesn't include the land, but then the people that are renting the land are going to have to pay both the rent and the cost of the house. So, maybe the county can adjust the rental cost down so it's more affordable, but that's, you know, just a thought that pops into my head. So, I guess that's...
So, I guess that's, that's my comment. So, anymore? Okay, it sounds like we have some silence. We want to thank you, folks. It was a very good presentation. I appreciated it. And so, we'll look forward to hearing more. Thank you, and we'll close the hearing at this point.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.